Good evening. We'll call this meeting of Fairfield County Council to order Monday, October 22, 2018, at 6:00 PM. First item on the agenda tonight is the approval of the agenda. Do we have a motion?
So moved, Mr. Chair.
It's moved and properly seconded that the agenda for tonight's meeting be approved as presented. Any discussion? Seeing none, those in favor?
Uh-uh.
Those opposed? By vote of seven to zero, the agenda for tonight is approved. We're now down to the invocation. Council Vice Chair Goins.
Thank you. Lord God, we dishonor you and bless you, and we praise you, Father, for allowing us to come together one more time to discuss and share the business of the county, Lord God, that affects each and every one of us. Father, we ask for your direction in all things, that you'd order our steps, our hearts, and our minds, that we do what is right in pleasing in your sight, in the name of Jesus. Amen.
Thank you, Mrs. Goins. Next is the approval of minutes from our regular meeting on October 8, 2018. Do we have a motion?
So moved.
Motion has been made and properly seconded to approve the minutes from the October 8, 2018, regular meeting as presented. Any discussion? Seeing none, those in favor?
Uh-uh.
Those opposed? By vote of seven to zero, those minutes are approved. We're now down to public presentations. We have one for tonight. This is a presentation from the Fairfield County School District Education Foundation pertaining to a request for a special source revenue credit.
I chair the newly-founded Fairfield County School District Education Foundation, and our primary focus for this foundation is to build a residential community here in Fairfield County for the teachers. We have an extreme shortage of teachers in our state, and it's only getting worse, and especially in rural districts. If you think about the teachers in Fairfield County, seventy-five percent of them do not live in Fairfield County, which means they don't spend their money here either. They also have usually two hours a day that they're driving, an hour to get here, an hour to get home. And it's very difficult to recruit teachers and retain them when they're having to put forth that type of commitment every day. The foundation will be doing many things as we move along in our endeavors, but our primary focus right now is building a teacher village. I wanted the full county council and the community to kind of understand where we are at this point. The school board has given the foundation twenty-two acres of property, and that property sits right behind the administration building on 321. We will be dividing that into two parcels, and on parcel one, we want to build thirty individual homes. Now, the way we're going to be able to do this, after many months of foundation members talking to lending institutions, we realize that the only way we can put together the home project is probably with HUD money. The problem with HUD money is that there's a limit on how much people in that household can earn in order to live there. And if a teacher, even though he or she's starting salary is only thirty-two thousand, and there may be teachers who've been here for maybe ten years that want to live in the village, if you add that with a spouse, a partner, that's living in that house as well, most likely, they will go over that limit, which means HUD housing really isn't going to work for us. After many discussions with some builders, a builder up in Rock Hill, many of you may know him, Skip Tuttle, who is working on developing Main Street in Rock Hill, he advised me to talk to a builder in West Columbia who deals with investors in Charlotte. I did that, along with the other foundation members, and the builder Wade McGwin, M-C-G-U-I-N-N, works with Gorlick Brothers Capital Investment in Charlotte, and it's right near South Park. The building is right there. Our board members have visited the work of Wade McGwin. We have gone to Charlotte and met several times with the investors, and the reason they're interested in putting three-point-six million dollars into this project, their cash, in other words, we're not putting any money into it, we're not asking the school district or the city or the county to put any money into it, they are going to put all three-point-six million dollars into this project. Now, the reason that it's a good investment for them is because we have a need. We have a need that teachers want to live here, but they don't have a lot of options. And so, this is a great option, because these are single homes, two, three, and even four-bedroom houses with two, two-and-a-half bathrooms. It's going to be a very, very nice neighborhood. And so, Gorlick Brothers Capital is interested because we have the occupants who want to live there, and we will do a lot of the marketing through just our recruiting and retention efforts. This is an investment for them that they think is going to really work and develop into an industry that is needed all over this country, which is providing housing in rural parts of the state. What we want to do is put together a template that works so beautifully that the school district, the foundation, the county council, the private investors can work together to put this project in place and make it successful. So I'm here tonight to just show you a few pictures on the PowerPoint, and in the hopes that it will lead us to this SSRC credits of what we need from Gorlick Brothers, what Gorlick Brothers needs from the county council, is approval for a multi-county park agreement. And once they have that, they are ready to go. The engineer is ready to go, CEC out of Columbia. The builder Wade McGwin is ready to go. These vendors have, you know, worked with the investor, they've given them their price points, and the only thing holding us back at this point is for county council to approve a multi-county park agreement for us. So let's take a look in the community at what this might look like. They're going to build three different homes. Eight of the thirty homes will be the Mill Street. This is the smallest of the three. This one does not have a garage, but it does have two bedrooms and two bathrooms. We do need some one-story homes, because there will be some teachers who, for whatever reason, cannot handle the stairs, and of course, even a federal need in terms of any disabilities. So we have eight of these. On the next one, oh, this just shows, they did a little looking at percentages of rent to income for people who live in the Mill Street. Okay? The next one is the Savannah, and this has got two or three bedrooms, and it depends on exactly how we want to divide it, but there'll be eighteen homes that are built with the Savannah. And this is what that home will look like, and this one is, as you can see, two-story, but on the upstairs, they will do some of them with three bedrooms and some with two bedrooms, but they do have two-and-a-half baths. And that, again, is showing you different, looking at different amounts of income and that rent-to-income percentage that they provided. And then the third home is our largest, the Monticello. We're only going to do four of those in this first thirty homes, and this one will have four bedrooms, and it will have the two-and-a-half baths. And there will be some teachers, of course, that have children, and they need a larger home. And we like the homes, because we feel the teachers are going to stay longer. You know, there are a couple of teacher villages across the nation, but most of them build apartment buildings. Our thought is that if you build the homes and you do it right, teachers will stay, instead of just moving out year after year. These will be one-year contracts that they will sign with Gorlick Brothers, and they are in charge of all of the management of running this teacher village. The other eleven acres, by the way, we're going to put into walking trails, and if we fill these thirty homes up, and the need is there, which we predict there will, we will move into phase two on that other eleven acres and build thirty to forty more homes. There is enough land for possibly seventy homes in this development, but we're taking it one step at a time with this first thirty. The next one, this shows you basically what it would look like if all those homes were put in, and the large rectangle is the administration building on 321. That's another picture of it. Just giving you a look of what it would be driving down the street with these homes. And this shows you basically how those thirty homes will be placed on that first eleven acres of property. This is a breakdown on costs, and I'll read it for those who can't read it from where you're sitting. The first one is engineering and surveying fees of thirty-five thousand dollars. The land is zero, because the school district gave the foundation the land. Next is lot improvement, and the estimate by CEC was seven-hundred thousand to put in the roads, the curbs, stormwater, water, and sewer. Pavilion and green space area, they've allotted for this amount, thirty thousand. Thirty homes with the different floor plan mixes, two-million-seven-hundred-ninety-nine-thousand. Water and sewer and individual tap fees, forty-five thousand, and the project total right now is three-million-and-six-hundred-and-nine-thousand dollars. And that is my presentation at this point. Again, our need is for the county council to approve a multi-county tax agreement so that we can then proceed on our part.
Thank you, Dr. Rex, for the presentation. Council members, any questions or comments?
Dr. Rex.
Mr. Douglas.
Yes.
You did a good job again. Thank you. For fifty years, I have been in the business of renting houses to the public. Based on my experience, I'm interested in how you plan to rent these houses for no more than six to nine-hundred dollars a month. It seems those rates are low for what the tenants will be getting based on the square footage. If that is correct, that's wonderful, but how will the houses be rented for rates this low? Is it possible that the school district will be subsidizing the rental fees?
Yes, sir. I'm going to let Dr. Green answer that question.
So that's a very good question. The state of South Carolina has allocated resources, because retention and recruitment has been such a large issue in South Carolina. And so, we have what we call recruitment and retention funding. That's proviso funding that has been in the state budget for several years now. We plan to utilize our funding to help reduce the rental rates. And so, you're right, we will be supplementing those rates with that retention and recruitment funding. They are looking for a school district to do some innovative things with those funds. And so, obviously, some people are doing sign-on bonuses, some people are doing some other recruitment-type activities. We feel as if this is an outstanding way for us to utilize our funds. So you are right, it will be supplemented with those retention and recruitment funds.
Thank you, Mr. Pauli.
Mr. Green, if I understand correctly, you are going to subsidize recruiting teachers here, and I take it as giving them allowance, helping them pay their rent. What about the teachers that you already have here that won't use the housing? Would they get anything extra to help with their rent or mortgage payment or anything like that?
No. And so, these retention and recruitment funds have to be, we have to submit plans to the state in terms of how we are going to utilize those funds. Our plan will entail this teacher housing development. So in terms of those retention and recruitment funds, no, those will not be used to supplement the rents or mortgages of any additional teachers.
Has the foundation received any more estimates from any other builders besides this one builder?
No. And so, let's back up a second, and so, as Dr. Rex said, initially, we were out trying to secure funding just from a private lender. The foundation's plan was that we would use the land as collateral, borrow the money, and then go ahead and shop that around to various developers. Well, Dr. Rex made a contact with Gorlick Brothers Capital, who came in and said, "We don't want to lend you the money to do it, we want to come in and do it ourselves." And so, we want to invest the three-point-six million dollars ourselves, you don't have to pay anything. Now, as you can imagine, if Gorlick Brothers is spending the three-point-six million dollars, they'll get to determine who they want to build the homes. Now, obviously, the foundation can have some input in there, but if it's their money, they'll get to pick the developer, and obviously, they have a relationship with McGwin Homes. So that's why McGwin Homes works with Gorlick Brothers, because they have a previous relationship.
Just real quickly, if I can, I don't know if it was said, maybe I might not have heard it, but what would the subsidy be?
Yeah.
What would that amount?
Yeah, so the subsidy would be about three-hundred dollars a month. And so, for thirty homes, it'd be about a hundred-and-eight thousand dollars a year, if my math is correct.
Okay, so then that's to the homes, not the individuals?
Not to the individuals.
Okay, thank you. Sorry about that, just while we, before we got off that topic.
One last question, Mr. Green. Have you talked to the town of Windsboro concerning the zoning in that area?
Yes, and so, actually, I had a meeting with one of my staff members today. He's currently in the process of talking to the town of Windsboro, starting that whole process, and as you probably know, that's about a six-week process to go through all the particulars, but we're getting all the paperwork together right now to submit. And so, right now, I mean, ultimately, the land will be transferred to the foundation. We're doing a little legwork on the front end, even though we hadn't finalized the transfer to the foundation, so the school district is still, the school district still owns the land currently. So we're trying to get it rezoned before we transfer it to the foundation.
Thank you.
And another thing I want to just correct that Dr. Rex said, starting teacher salary in Fairfield is thirty-seven thousand dollars a year, not thirty-two. So I don't want to hear your question, this is about thirty-seven thousand a year.
That's good, thank you, Doc. Anyone else? Mr. Pauli, again.
One other question I do have. The homes, I'm assuming that as you get a bigger home, that the monthly rent would be higher?
And so, Ms. Paul, that's why we said the range is between six-hundred dollars to about nine-hundred dollars a month. And so, the two-bedroom home, which is a smaller home, is obviously going to be six-hundred dollars. The larger home is going to be nine to thousands, somewhere in that ballpark.
And that's with the three-hundred dollar?
No, 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 no. Yeah, that's with the three-hundred dollar supplement, yes.
Okay.
Yeah, so without the three-hundred dollar supplement, Mrs. Jimmy Ray Douglas is right, it would be more than six or nine-hundred dollars.
Yeah, okay.
Yes, Mr. Trapp.
Dr. Green, what timeframe are y'all trying to accomplish?
So, Mr. Trapp, I mean, ideally, we'd like for this project to be launched by August of 2019. I think this gives us an opportunity to go out and continue to recruit people, people who may be considering taking a job someplace else. I mean, I want to be able to share this information so they reconsider. And this is how I explain it to people, when they say, "Well, why is it that teachers need to live in your community?" The reality is, I can do a great job recruiting teachers, but let's say you live in Columbia, South Carolina, you drive by fifteen schools every day. Sooner or later, you're going to think, "Why am I driving by fifteen schools?" I love JR, I love Fairfield County, but there are probably some good schools that I'm passing by every day. So it's harder to retain people if they constantly are traveling from Lexington, from Columbia, from Rock Hill, because they drive by lots of schools. You know, I told some people during one of my breakfasts that we have an outstanding chorus teacher at Fairfield Central High School. He's in his third year. We got him as a first-year teacher from Wetherham University, outstanding. Well, we almost lost him this year right here. He spent two years here. Last year, he said, "I think I'm going to accept a job in Rock Hill." Well, he's driving from Rock Hill every day, he's passing lots of schools every day. They know he's good, so people are calling him saying, "Hey, don't waste your gas and time going up to Fairfield County, you can stay right here in Rock Hill and do the same good work." So we have to find a way to create opportunities for our people to live here, and that not only benefits us as a system, it benefits our community. And so, if we can get people to spend their resources in Fairfield County, that has an economic impact to our community. Let's just throw a number out there, if we had seventy people who lived here making an average of fifty thousand dollars a year, who previously didn't live here, I mean, that's a three-million-dollar impact to this community. People are going to our restaurants, going to our grocery stores, going to our pharmacies, when now they are spending that money in other communities. So I see this as not only a way for us to improve our abilities to recruit and retain teachers, I see this as a way to improve our abilities to spur some economic growth in our community as well.
Absolutely. Mr. Roof.
Yeah, I agree, it would be an economic boost to the county, and how many, just, I know you've told me before, but number of teachers that you've talked to in the last year or two that are spoken favorably of this program and staying in the county?
Yeah, and so, that's a very good question, Mr. Roof. So the last survey we did, we had about sixty-one teachers who expressed interest in this project. And so, that's teachers that are currently living here. I'm not even talking about the teachers that we're going out recruiting. So I very well feel as if we'll surpass that thirty mark just as soon as we open it up. I think we can get to filling seventy homes relatively quickly, which, as I said, can be a tremendous impact to this community.
All right. Ms. Goins?
Thank you. Just wanted to ask a few questions on what we discussed. Is there a cap for the rent, and that you're doing the subsidy, and that's a great thing, that's awesome? Is there a cap for it, you know, between the six and nine-hundred, or will that change maybe a little later?
Yes, and so, Gorlick Brothers, they told us that they'll put in a contract that it wouldn't rise, I think, more than two percent a year. You know, as you can imagine, if they're going to invest three-point-six million dollars, not knowing what the cost of living, supplies, and all of these things may be, it very well could be some increases over time, just like the gallon of milk. I mean, so that's very possible, but they determined that it shouldn't rise more than about two percent per year.
Okay, and I understand exactly what you're going through, because we're doing the same thing with the administrative building, the same process, that someone else comes in and says, "We're going to invest X amount of monies, dollars, and we're going to do this on the front end, and we're going to do a lot of this, and then at the end of that term, then, you know, you get the benefit of it." So I support you one-hundred percent. Also, I think we discussed in the session about a proposed contract that, you know, something drawn up that we could see before we, you know, do the tax part. If there's something in place for that, that you have a copy in place, proposed contract in place.
Yes, so we don't have a contract. I mean, obviously, there'll be a contract between the Gorlick Brothers Capital and the foundation. That contract does not exist at this point in time. What we afforded the county council are all the particulars of the financial arrangements. Obviously, the contract is going to go in a whole lot of detail.
Oh, yeah, yes.
Yeah, it's going to get a lot of details, and Dr. Rex spoke to one of the members of the Gorlick Brothers team, and he says that that process could take up to six or eight weeks before that entire final contract is done.
Oh, okay, now, I wasn't talking about implementing, I just something that we could have in place, because I'm telling you, people get on you about transparency and accountability, and they will eat you up about that, so I want to make sure that both of us, all of us, that we're in this together, to make sure that we are all okay on the front end, so on the back end, we don't have a problem, because we want to expedite this and try to do it right, because this is an awesome thing, and I'm glad to see it get to this point, and...
Well, and so, what I would say there, Ms. Goins, is if the county government is looking for something in particular, then I'll be happy to speak to Gorlick Brothers about that. The contract between the foundation and Gorlick Brothers is going to deal with specifics in terms of the foundation's interaction with Gorlick Brothers, which I think is something separate.
Yeah, that's right, that's right. That's just you all, just something, you know, for us. Like I said, it just covers you and it covers us. I think I had another question there in the count of...
Mr. Douglas has one, so if you recall the question, we'll refer back to you.
We discussed, during the night, we discussed that the people that would be able to rent these houses would be teachers, first responders, and law enforcement. Now, the law enforcement and first responders, would they also take advantage of three-hundred dollar discount on the rent?
No, sir. And so, the rule...
Be anywhere from nine-hundred to twelve, thirteen-hundred dollars.
Unless the county wanted to find some funds to do something similar to what we're doing with educators.
We don't have quite the funding.
Okay, and obviously, the county is well within their right to do that, so, yeah.
Another contract.
Yeah, and retention fund is for educators. I mean, that's what the state has set aside, because, I mean, every time you pick up the paper, folks, you see that the shortage is growing and growing and growing and growing, and growing exponentially in rural communities. And so, they realize, and I think it's important, know that all districts don't get rural recruitment and retention funding. I mean, this is primarily for rural districts that are struggling to be able to recruit and retain teachers. So there's some districts in more urban, more suburban areas that don't have some of the same struggles, and so, they don't get the same funding.
Absolutely. Dr. Green, just on that point, and that was a good question, I know that you're also looking at including district staff in as well. Would they get the subsidy funding, or is that specifically for educated teachers?
Well, it's specific for teachers, okay?
That makes sense.
Yes, it's specific for teachers, and let me just expand on that a little bit, too, in terms of what the priority is. And so, obviously, our first priority would be teachers, okay? Our second priority would be staff members, third priority would be first responders, and if there is space available after that, then they could rent to general public. Quite honestly, I don't think it would ever get to that. I mean, I think if we opened up thirty homes, thirty homes probably would be filled by teachers very, very quickly.
Just one other question on that point. That funding that's currently in place, I believe, I spoke with Dr. Rex today and appreciate that, but that funding that's currently in place, is that recurring revenue? Is there an agreement with Gorlick Brothers to provide that for a certain specific period of time? Will that only be for year one, or will it phase in and out? How long can you carry that forward, or can you represent that today?
Now, what funding are you talking about now?
So, the subsidy.
So the supplement, so the supplement.
How long could the district do that? You know, could you do it for one year? Could you do it for ten years if you wanted to? I mean, what's the status of that?
Yeah, and so...
Something that state legislature changes every year?
Yeah, and so, and it's probably been in the budget now, if I had to just go off the top of my head, maybe three or four years, okay? And it's in proviso. And so, as you can, you know, for those of us who kind of study budgets, I mean, once things go in proviso, they tend to stay in proviso for many, many years until they become permanent parts of the budget. I anticipate that within a few years, it will become a permanent part of the budget, because the teaching shortage is only going, is going to get worse.
But there's no specific, well, you don't have a contract yet, so there wouldn't be specific language to that effect at this time. Mr. Roof had another question?
No, I just got a comment. I just want to commend you and the foundation for your creative thinking in this idea and this process, and I think it is fantastic idea, and hope it all works out, so, thank you.
Absolutely. Mrs. Goins?
And I, too, want to piggyback on that. Thank you so much for not giving up, pushing forward, thank the foundation for coming in, and that's what networking is. You can't, we can't do anything by ourselves. One person comes up with the idea, and then somebody else will come in and say, "Well, I can help in this part," and then she makes contact with somebody else, and that's just how we're going to build this county together. So, and I thank you so much for the, I know you're going through a lot, it's a hard job to get there, because we know about this administrative building, we know what you're going through, but I thank you for keeping, keep pushing on. And you're going to see many other housing projects coming up after this pops up. We're going to see some big things happening. This is going to be ripe for some opening.
You know, I'll tell you, I've had a couple of districts that already called me, who have been watching our progress as it relates to this housing project over the last, I don't know, year and a half or so. And so, it's going to happen.
Yes.
I mean, the question is, will we do it to this scale first, or will it be one of our, one of our neighboring districts in South Carolina? But it's absolutely going to happen, because the teaching shortage is only getting worse. And so, Gorlick Brothers is already in conversation with some other districts, all right? And so, once we made the contact, other people made contact with them, and so, they are pursuing them just as we are pursuing it. And so, I want to reiterate the fact that they are investing the three-point-six million dollars. Gorlick Brothers is putting up all the capital. All they're asking for is the tax incentive, okay? As Dr. Rex said, the first step is the multi-county park. After the multi-county park, obviously, the school district needs to make a determination in terms of, rather, they have a commitment to pass a tax incentive, and then the county council has to determine what you're willing to do as well.
Absolutely. Anyone else? All right, well, I'll just echo the sentiments that the others have had, both Dr. Rex, Dr. Green, and the work that's been done to this point. Still, I think a good bit of work to do. I'm a detail-oriented person, I know we have a few others from past experience up here who are as well, and so, I hope we can, we can get more in the way of documentation and things of that nature, and then be able to kind of put this on a fast track from that point forward. So, but again, thank you for the work you've done, I appreciate the conversations we've had. Folks don't realize what all it takes, had a conversation with both of you on Sunday afternoon yesterday, so I appreciate that. Once again, anyone else? All right, thank you.
Thank you.
I want to thank all of you for your support and your consideration. I think, I think our... I want to thank all of you for your, uh, support and your consideration. Uh, I, I think, I think our Foundation will make you proud. And we want Fairfield County to be the first in the state, and really, one of the first in the nation. The, the, the teacher villages that, that are out there are apartment buildings. They're not individual homes that, that families will move into, enjoy, and live there. And you, being able as a beginning teacher to live in a village and have the support of thirty teachers helping you talk about discipline and organization and all the, all the complexities of doing a good job as an educator, th- this is, this is really going to be uh, something that I think will get national attention.
Thank you again.
Okay, thank you, Bill.
All right, at this time, we will move to the first public comments session. Mrs. Davis?
We have two who wish to speak tonight. First, Mr. Jeff Morris, speaking on Teacher Village Hedge Fund Windfall.
Good evening. Uh, we are blessed to have Dr. Green as our superintendent. Very energetic guy, very charismatic guy. And that's why it somewhat pains me to disagree with him. This sounds like a good idea, but what it is is a shifting of income to a hedge fund rather than some other private lessor. Additionally, as we've already heard, they've got at least sixty people that want to move in here. How are you going to recruit people to a place when you've got sixty people in front of them? I don't see how that really is going to likely aid your recruiting efforts. It may aid retention efforts, I'm not sure. We don't know, for example, how many people of the sixty that want to move in are already in Fairfield County. If that's the case, you just took them out of one apartment or house and put them in this one, and you've given a hundred and eight thousand dollars a year, which I didn't realize was also out there, in these subsidies, plus the tax subsidies from both the district and the county. That's a pretty substantial contribution. Uh, additionally, even if you talk about the second phase, up to seventy homes, you're still not past the number of people who are almost already there, and you haven't even addressed the possibility of first responders, law enforcement, also having opportunities, staff, that sort of thing. So I, I, I'm, I'm a little skeptical about the retention side of this, uh, excuse me, the recruitment side of this. Secondly, I, I think that there's also a lot of weeds that we have to go through. Mr. Smith talks about details. There's lots of details. One of the things, uh, that, uh, Dr. Green mentioned last week in the meeting was, well, we just, all we have to do is guarantee the occupancy. What happens if people don't sign up? I can imagine a twenty-three-year-old graduate saying, I'm not so sure I want to live in a village with nothing but the people that I teach with. I might want a little bit of privacy, get away from my job. Nevertheless, that's just one, one, uh, outlook. Importantly, though, I think we're, we're asking the district and the council, and here the council, to put up a lot of money indirectly. These guys are in it because they think they can make money at it. Maybe they're saying, we're not going to make much on this one, but when we go national because it's such a great idea, we'll be fabulously wealthy. And in fact, Fairfield County will look like the shining light for having started it. Entirely possible. But hedge funds are in it to make a buck. Don't mistake it. What liability is there for the county and the school district for that matter in terms of situations where you're under subscribed? And you start renting these out to anybody else? Are we giving lower rents to other people? I doubt it. So in other words, they could end up renting these out to anybody at a market rate and get tax abatements. Doesn't make sense. So to whatever extent you decide to go forward on this, I hope you are extremely careful about the agreement that, uh, provides for the tax abatement. Thank you.
Next, Mr. Randy Bright, speaking on School District Housing Project.
Randy Bright, District One, Ridgeway. I, too, really like out-of-the-box thinking, and I like the idea that we're looking at, uh, doing whatever possible, what's best for our children in this county. And I, I like that thinking. And I'm also, I've also done a lot of research on these, uh, type of projects, and they have proven to be successful in major cities, from San Francisco to Baltimore. They have been proven to be successful in very rural counties that are not adjacent to, uh, metro counties. I haven't seen any, however, projects that would be similar to ours, where we're very close to a lot of housing in the Midlands. That being said, and it's already been mentioned, I, I have many reservations about this project. And the previous speaker, uh, spoke to a lot of my same reservations. But the, the biggest reservation I have, and I'd like to reemphasize, others have expressed this, we don't know the details. And how many times has this county been burned because we rushed into a project and we didn't know the details, and we say, oops, we screwed up? This county's been scarred physically and physically by rushing in without the details. And one interesting thing that, uh, for example, in details in this, it just did a kind of back of the envelope, actually, back of the, uh, agenda page, uh, figuring of the, uh, profitability of this project, just very quickly taking thirty homes, time the, time the, uh, median, uh, rental property, uh, rent, you get about four hundred thousand dollars a year in rent. Now, if you invest three point six million dollars, that's, uh, only a eight, that's an eight-year payoff. I don't know any hedge fund manager that would be employed investing three point six million dollars, and it would take eight years just to break even. Nine years, excuse me. So, and, and I, again, I don't know the details, so I can't fully comment on that. I can just go by the information, uh, we've been given. And of course, the other thing is, is the seven hundred thousand dollars, uh, figure correct for infrastructure? It seems really light, uh, based upon, you know, my particular, uh, experience in subdivisions in other areas of the country. That seems a, really a light estimate. A lot of things, and one really important one that the previous speaker brought up, can these apartments, uh, uh, be subletted? And what are the conditions there? Lots of details, and without a, a real proposal in place, I don't see how we can commit to six hundred thousand dollars, uh, from the county for, with, uh, tax rebates and be able to have a straight face when we face, uh, prospective builders in the future. So...
Thank you.
That concludes Segment One.
Thank you, Mrs. Davis. We're now down to ordinances, resolutions, and orders. We have four for tonight. Item A is third and final reading on Ordinance Number Seven Zero Eight. This is an ordinance authorizing the execution and delivery of a lease agreement between Fairfield County and the Fairfield County Hospital Board, also known as Fairfield Memorial Hospital, and other related matters. Do we have a motion?
Second.
Motion has been made and properly seconded that council provide third and final reading to Ordinance Number Seven Zero Eight. Any discussion? All right, seeing no discussion, those in favor?
Uh-uh.
Those opposed? By vote of seven to zero, third and final reading has been provided to Ordinance Number Seven Zero Eight. We're now down to Item B, first reading by title only of Ordinance Number Seven Ten. This is an ordinance authorizing the execution and delivery of a lease agreement between Fairfield County and Fairfield Medical Associates, P.A., and other related matters. Do we have a motion?
So move, Mr. Chair.
Motion has been made and properly seconded to provide first reading by title only, so there is no discussion, to Ordinance Number Seven Ten. Those in favor?
Uh-uh.
Those opposed? By vote of seven to zero, Ordinance Number Seven Ten has been given first reading. Now, first reading by title only of Ordinance Number Seven Eleven, an ordinance authorizing the execution and delivery of a lease agreement between Fairfield County and Community Health Foundation of Fairfield County and other related matters. Do we have a motion?
So move, Mr. Chair.
Motion has been made and properly seconded to provide first reading by title only, so there is no discussion, to Ordinance Number Seven Eleven. Those in favor?
Uh-uh.
Those opposed? By vote of seven to zero, Ordinance Seven Eleven has been provided first reading. We have first reading also by title only on Ordinance Number Seven Twelve. This is an ordinance authorizing the execution and delivery of a lease agreement between Fairfield County and South Carolina E.N.T. Allergy and Sleep Medicine, P.A., and other related matters. Do we have a motion? Motion has been made and properly seconded to provide first reading by title only, so there is no discussion, to Ordinance Number Seven Twelve. Those in favor?
Uh-uh.
Those opposed? By vote of seven to zero, Ordinance Number Seven Twelve has been given first reading. Thank you. I feel like a robot now. Appreciate that. Next, Boarding Commission Minutes. We have, uh, Item A, uh, and only is Airport Commission. Do we have a motion to approve those minutes?
One move.
Motion has been made and properly seconded to approve the Airport Commission Minutes as presented. Any discussion? Seeing none, those in favor?
Uh-uh.
Those opposed? By vote of seven to zero, those minutes have been approved. No Boarding Commission appointments, no old business, no new business. We're now down to the County Administrator's Report. Mr. Taylor?
Yes, Council. Just a few items tonight. I wanted to update Council on the hospital, uh, land purchase. As of last Tuesday, we did close on the hospital, and we now own, uh, the two medical office buildings, uh, the one rehab center, and then the piece of primarily vacant land that runs behind it, uh, wrapping from, uh, Dr. Gaddy's office back up to, um, the bypass. Uh, one point six million dollars was paid for that, that property. Um, the next item, unless there's no questions with that, or any questions with that. Uh, we do have Ms. Sheila Pickett, um, our procurement director. She wanted to update, uh, Council on an item we talked about a little while back, uh, the disposal of a lot of, uh, merchandise that we have, desks primarily, file cabinets, those kind of things, that, uh, have been stored in the HUN building. Uh, we typically send a lot of this kind of, uh, merchandise to state surplus, but this is, uh, of such quality that they would not accept it. So we're going to try to offer it locally, um, for sale. Sheila, I will let you go into that.
Good evening, Council. Um, just, just giving you a brief update, you know, you requested some of the items that we were planning on selling at our surplus sale, um, for the county. Um, I'm planning, I'm hoping that if Council approves for us to go forth with it, uh, we have some items over in our HUN building. Um, you'll see that we have some tables and chairs, some printers. The pictures make it look good because they have been cleaned up by our maintenance staff so thus far, but we have plenty of other stuff that needs to be cleaned up. Um, our maintenance is actually going through and cleaning up, um, the surplus stuff that we do have over there. Um, you want the next one, Davis? Executive, this is executive, um, desk. We have side chairs. We just have regular chairs over there. That's another desk. Um, some stools. We have several chairs, and let's just say that. We have plenty of chairs. Um, some of them are, um, badly damaged, um, torn, worn out, but, you know, someone can do good upholstery work, that might work out good for them. Um, rocking chairs, um, wooden, we have good wooden tables. Not that good, but they're wooden tables that are, that are usable. Uh, we have, um, some wooden, um, twin beds that we got out of our EMS department some years ago, just been in our, uh, HUN building. These are twin beds with the slats on. They're pretty much, uh, still good. They're good quality, good quality wood. Folding tables, printing, um, printing tables, computer tables with the rolling carts on them that we used to use back in the day, but we no longer use and have a need for. They're there. Exercise equipment, we, we have there. Um, a lot of this exercise equipment come out of our, some of our rec facilities, um, and our EMS, um, department. That's a stair stepper there. You see there. We clean up. Computers and monitors, we have abundance of, of computers and monitors that we no longer use. They're obsolete, of course. The hard drives have been removed from each one of those units. We have the old, um, monitors. We call them the big TV monitors, um, and some, we also, next one, we have some flat screen monitors also. But all the hard drives have been removed. You, you're just getting a regular shell computer. More computers, of course, that needs to be cleaned up. We have plenty of printers, um, at our, that site also. Um, TV remote, that's a T, old TV I, I know that has a DV, uh, DV player on it. It still works with the remote control. Um, they TV up on it and rolling carts. What's that? We have laptops. Of course, the hard drives have been removed, laptop bags that goes with them. Some old metal desk and old mainframe that's been used back in, probably before I got here. Um, they're still there. Window shelves, um, just building supplies, materials that we've taken off and worked on various buildings throughout the counties. We have a lot of that, those supplies over there. Additional supplies that you may see on, uh, on the list, we have some printers, uh, file cabinets, and, um, some refrigerators. I know there's one refrigerator over there. And of course, the date that we have, uh, when we do the sale, all sales will be final, sold as is. That day of the sale, um, if they're purchasing those items, they must pick it up that same day. If not, we will dispose of it. And any items that we do not sell that day, we would like to properly dispose of it in our recycling bins.
Is it just for people to come up and look at them and make my offers on them, or they're going to be auctioning off?
We'll have a price list set for that day. I'm still working on to complete that price list. I didn't want to hand it out to you just today, but the price list will be, um, forwarded to you prior to, so you'll know what's out there. And hopefully that we can have a preview sale the day before. Yes, sir.
Thank you for the, uh, illustration, Ms. Pickett. I hate you had to go through the pictures, but...
Well, we had to go through some cleanup first, too, though.
Mr. Taylor, will county employees be able to bid on any items?
Yes, I mean, it's a purchase. It's really not a bid process. It's just a purchase.
I was just curious, were they, were they able to, uh, bid on anything, so?
Yes. Yes, this is a public sale that we have it on a Saturday. We would like to have it on Saturdays, but open to the public.
I, I will say, I know it might would take a little bit more administrative work, but I'd like to see maybe a, an, an, an auction with a set minimum as the current price instead of just allowing anybody to come buy it for that price. Might would net a little bit more that way. Um, the other question, question I would have is, have we, just thinking about future planning, looked at any of the stuff that we have in surplus now? I know some of it may not be the best condition. I, I don't know that all of it's terrible, but I wonder if we've looked at any of that, uh, with the, the idea in mind that, you know, we're, we're going to be moving into a building here within the next year and a half that's almost double this size?
We did pull through some of it primarily for the library, looking at the, what we needed there. Uh, we pulled back anything we thought we could use. Uh, to be honest, a lot of this stuff that, uh, we're putting up, it is, is really not in very good condition. It's going to be for someone who wants to buy it and repurpose it possibly or work on it.
Okay. All right, anyone else? Thank you.
I have one other item.
Sure.
Um, we are also...
Davis, is that your old truck?
No. We're going to do, uh, a competitive bid process for a vehicle that we have, that we did not send out in surp, state surplus to be sold. So it is a two thousand and seven, it's, um, Chevy S T N vehicle, so.
All right, thank you. Thank you, Ms. Pickett. Anything else, Mr. Taylor?
No, that's all I've got, Mr. Chairman.
All right, we have no clerk to council's report for night, and we're down to the second public comments session.
We have four speakers for this section tonight. First, Mr. Randy Sisk, speaking on business.
Thank you, Mr. Smith, Ms. Goins, Council, staff. Been a while since I've been here. Been busy. We are now in the Gordon Odyssey Building, the old school. Thank you, Dr. Green, and the board. Place is looking good. We currently have ten clients. Uh, we started off with a couple here and theirs, maybes. But we have three incubator clients and seven that are looking for help with their business plans. Four of those will be possibly main street businesses. Uh, the other four would be somewhere out in the county. Uh, that is one thing that we do require, is, uh, that your business be in Fairfield County. I'm going to hold back on one subject. Uh, spoke to Dr. Green. I've got a large announcement coming in about a month and a half. I think you'll like, uh, and I'm just going to let you, let you wait on that one. But, uh, things are looking good for us. Again, thank you, Dr. Green.
Thank you. Thank you.
Next, Ms. Peggy Swerengen, speaking on Accountability One O One.
Accountability One O One. Sometimes we need to do some housekeeping, or better yet, just clean house. On June twentieth, two thousand and thirteen, Fairfield County purchased a house and an acre of land for fifteen thousand dollars at one eighteen, Row ninety-nine. This is two thousand and eighteen, five years later. The house is gone. What are we doing with this thing? Why did we purchase it, and do we need it? Accountability One O One. Fairfield County has done several renovations to many of their buildings. It seems that substantial work was completed and signed off on. Who is responsible for signing off on these jobs? Accountability One O One. Oh, yes, something else you might like to know on the subject of that forty-three million dollars that Fairfield County owes, that some people think we need to put behind us and move on. But how can we put it behind us when it's staring us in the face every morning? We will not pay any principal on it until two thousand and twenty-six. That's thirteen years of just interest. But who's counting? Oh, yes, one more thing. While I'm on that subject, closing attorneys get a hundred and twenty thousand dollars each year when the GO bonds are issued and the check is sent. This is for how many years? It's up to three million dollars. check is sent. This is for how many years? Except for $3 million. Listen up and take note, voters. Accountability 101. The time has come for us as voters to take the reins in our hands and demand that Fairfield County stop this unsupervised wasteful spending. When you're on the bottom, as Fairfield County is, the only way to go is up. Up with monitoring all spending, up with reading fine print, up with closer job inspections before approval, up with accountability on all our actions. We voters have a choice. We can continue on this same wagon trail, or we can blaze a new trail and bring Fairfield County out of these same old ruts that we have been stuck in for far too long of a time. The choice is yours. Let's roll up our sleeves and get it done with accountability. Accountability, accountability.
Thank you.
Next, Mr. Jeff Schaefer, speaking on election season.
This being the election season, I thought it appropriate to mention a few things. I will filter my comments as to not offend anyone in particular. One of the best things our great nation and founders have set forth for all of us to endure is our First Amendment, freedom of speech. Unfortunately, the county council has not seen fit in their infinite wisdom to allow us sufficient time to actually speak our minds. I'll do my best with the three minutes allocated and get right to the point. Let me speak first and relate them specifically to those who have limited time left in office. First, make the most of that time. Chances are, you won't be sitting in that seat after the election, especially if you're the council member who actually feels he can speak for other districts and put in the good word with the administration and council to help out your good buddy in Jenkinsville. That kind of political interference isn't going to get you reelected, for sure. It seems odd that this particular council member has been, for the most part, silent. As to his previous outspoken racial rants, it's not beyond reason for a person to be reelected, even if they're not particularly popular with the general public or other council members. What is important is that when an elected official who has had several ethics charges filed against him, and when he claims he will repay his tuition funds in excess of $26,000 to the taxpayers of this county, he starts to do that, and then he decides it's best to tell all the citizens, and I quote, "I will repay that money on the first of never." Some statements seem to linger on long after they're spoken. Now, there is no comparison to the now infamous first of never speech to four score and seven years ago. However, I can say with great certainty that time, as you relate it to, has a first of never, and for sure, your borrowed time will be running out in November. Let me be the first to say, bye-bye. I'm only sorry that Colonel had to resign, since when he sat in that chair, people from every district had faith in his words and deeds, and hopefully you will go into permanent retirement from hustling the county and ripping off the taxpayers. Even you, sir, can remember when there was no one here in the peanut gallery during county council meetings for years. And for the past five years, we the people have chosen to let the county representatives know what we want and who we want representing us. That is why there's always an audience watching and listening. To the rest of you, I wish good luck. Public opinion is what counts, really counts, not your comments or your opinions. We the people have made some great changes in the county for the better. You've got 11 seconds.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, Mr. Randy Bright, speaking on we will see.
Randy Bright, Ridgeway, District 1. It's always interesting following Jeff. I've been impressed lately by our councils in networking and emerging and connecting with other levels of government, including our local government, Washington DC, state government. And even, I noticed recently, a couple of our councilmen were hobnobbing. It had some Cantillon ball in networking there. However, I'd like for us to be able to leverage these contacts and these networks, so what I feel is a really important subject. And I think one of our, probably one of our barriers currently to bringing in new jobs, new employers, is either overtly or even covertly, the unknown factor in who's going to be managing our power, and what the fate is going to be for our rates, what the fate is going to be for our rates today, what the fate is going to be for our rates tomorrow. And I realize this is a state issue, and there's a lot of things going on, and if you follow the SCANA, there's a SCANA website that talks the news about it. And of course, there's a myriad of legal issues, and there's a myriad of other problems and obstacles, and there's an outside bidder that wants to come in and give us upfront money, but then stick it to us later on. Nevertheless, all these obstacles are slowing this down, and if I'm an outside employer, I want, I don't want to move in here unless I know what's going on with the power situation. So, I'd like for you guys to become engaged with our local state representatives, the governor's house, other people, whatever it takes. We need to prudently move forward. We've got to move forward in a speed that gets this behind us, but we also have to move forward so that we don't rush into things. Oh, we just talked about rushing into things. What happens when we do that? And I would, I know you're engaged in the lawsuit part of it, which we really not doing much on, can do much on that because it's a class action suit, but I think more importantly, I'd like to see a lot of emphasis in contacting with our legislators and governor's office and getting this stuff moved forward and moved right, so we can move forward and move right. Thank you.
Thank you.
That concludes segment two.
All right. Counsel time. Any council members? Mr. Robinson?
Yes, Mr. Chair. I'm not sure exactly what hobnobbing name. I'm about to look that one up. But I just wanted to speak on an event that took place over the weekend, Fairfield's first annual Keep Moving Forward, I think it was, in essence, but basically it was a breast cancer walk. And it was a great event. I wish more Fairfield County was out there, but to raise that amount of money and awareness for a certain cause is a good thing. What was ironic for me was that next day, I received a phone call by a fellow Marine of mine, over 25 years. He died of cancer, was battling cancer. So, it kind of hit home. And cancer sucks. Let's just go ahead and say it. So, next year, let's all come out and participate. It was held on the Mount Zion Trail Walk, and it was a beautiful day. It had a little overcast, but you had various people out there. They kept me in jail for raising money, kept Mr. Anderson in jail raising money for it. So, it was a good cause. So, just keep that in mind for when it is time next year. Let's come out and all participate.
Thank you, Mr. Robinson. Mr. Pauli?
I agree with Mr. Robinson. I had the pleasure of attending this great event in Fairfield County. And this event was called Keep Going Fairfield County 2018 Walk for Life. And it was to let the citizens that deal with breast cancer and other types of cancer that we, that they have our support. A big thank you to Kayron Eisenhower, who works for the Sheriff's Department, and 30 other volunteers, along with the Fairfield County Breast Cancer Support Group for putting this event on. The total raise was $4,416, and it was a great event.
Thank you. Mr. Douglas?
Well, I hobnobbed last weekend, too, with some people raising money for the animal shelter. And thanks to Vanessa Reynolds and Linda Carnes at their business site, we did raise the money and had guest of honor Mr. Davis Heinerson and Bob Ennis.
Mrs. Goins?
All right, thank you. I've been doing some hobnobbing, too, with the Masonic Lodge of Fairfield County. They did a scholarship for $1,000. And Deputy Orin Gadsden, I attended that one. Also, I did not say when I attended the alumni hobnob with them, they did three scholarships. And also with behavioral, with disability special needs, I'm on that board, and I'm so proud of them and the work they do for Fairfield County. But South Sterling Bank, again, and I think I can have the right one, South State Bank, I want to make sure I got the names. South State Bank, again, donated $2,500 to disability services. And the week before that, when I hobnob with Behavioral Health Services, they donated $2,500. And I want to give a shout out to Susan Taylor. She's everywhere all the time doing good things, and I want to give a shout out for that. Also, I have two other items, and I want to make this, I want to make it tactful, but the merger we've been talking about with the water departments, this is something necessary for the county. And I know it is something that years ago has been talked about. It's not a new thing. It's been years ago, but in order, we're talking about moving forward, moving forward. It's necessary. What this will do, especially for the western side, we've had problems with the water system, with the water line. My water's off two times the past two weeks. Pressure's still not up. But this will give a chance when we work together for state and federal funding for grants. Also give a chance in that part when we make some changes. It will take the stress off the president board as far as handling things. It brings the finances, everything on the umbrella, makes it transparent, makes it accountable, so nobody has to be accused of anything anymore. It also gives us an opportunity that we can get better water lines, and that water line has been in that ground since the company has started. And it's old and it's failing. We don't know if the water's contaminated or what. And because we're not getting the water reports, we're not getting financial reports, we're not getting just the necessary things that are open to the public. So, this will take a lot of that stress off and change it and open it up where people, businesses are able to come in without going through a lot of stress, a lot of headache about getting water accessibilities. All this will come under one umbrella, still able to pay your water bill there, still able to handle business there. But it's just a good transition. It's time for a change. If we keep doing the same thing, we'll always be where we've always been, and we'll never know if things can get better if we don't try to do better. So, this water merger, and that's what it is, it's a merger to strengthen and better the county. When I say community, I'm talking about Fairfield County. I'm not talking about just District 4, because we all, in order for District 4 to prosper, all of the county has to prosper. We have Chapin, I'm over there all the time, and they are just amazing. Every time I go over, something else new is coming up. They're right at our back door. As Columbia, Richland County is right at our front door, side door, whatever. Charlotte, we are right in the center. Why hold on to the same thing when you can open up a lot of the idea Dr. Green is doing, the administrative building? This is being innovative for growth, and you'll never know until you try. So, we definitely need the water merger. It's just a great thing. It's a win-win for everybody. I'm not knocking anybody, whatever, but it's just time for a change. It's time to do better. We can do better. Let's just do better. I also want to say on November 6th, I don't have the information. I was hoping I would get the flyers back by now, but on November 6th, Mount Mariah Baptist Church in Jenkinsville on Highway 215, we are hosting, thankfully we had the opportunity to host a job fair. And this is with DAY and Zimmerman. It's a nuclear company, but they also, they have so many jobs that it entails. And the name is D-A-Y Zimmerman, Z-I-M-M-E-N. And they have jobs starting at salaries from $10,990 indoor with, for training, up to $126,000. And they're going to be reaching out all over. They were going to do it in Newberry, and since they have a contact with them, and that's what networking's about, I want to get them with the team so we can do some future projects, future work. But they're going to be reaching out all throughout Fairfield County, Ridgeway. When I get the information, I'm going to pass it to every team member, to the staff. Want to push it out as far as possible. These are jobs that have good benefits, opportunity to move. It's a chance and opportunity if you want to grow, you want to move, innovative, whatever. It's all kind of different areas that people can work in, men and women. They are inclusive. So, just want to let you know, when I get the information, I'm just hearing about it, please let people know. This is going to be at Mount Mariah, November 6th, from 3:00 to 9:00. And anybody can come in, fill out an application, but please take advantage of this opportunity. It's a great chance. We can't always bring the company here, but when somebody is gracious enough to say, okay, we're going to come in and we're going to try to help you out and see you have some problems, we're going to try to help out there, a community-oriented company. And look them up, look at their website. You can find out about them. They're also subsidiary of Duke Energy. So, just want to hand that out, and that information will be getting out soon. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Vice Chair Goins. Yes, Councilmember Trap?
I was going to make a comment toward one of the speakers, but you know, I decided that ignorance or ignorant people don't deserve a comment. That's all I have, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Just a few things this evening. First of all, just want to make all of council aware of some of kind of what I've been up to. I met with Ron Rames, President of Midlands Tech on Friday. We had lunch and spoke about a potential funding opportunity for the county and an opportunity for our citizens and folks who go through, well, actually, any graduate of, you know, K through 12 education within the county, whether that be, you know, Fairfield Public Schools, whether that be a private school, homeschool, whatever. Talking about what is termed a promise program. And I will not be on this council next year to affect that one way or another, but I would like to just let the rest of you know that I think it's a wonderful idea. I think Mr. Rames may be contacting folks on an individual basis. But essentially what that is, is anyone who graduates from K-12 education from the county is looking to put a program in place that would fund if they went through Midlands Tech their first two years of education. And so, basically, the county would put an allotment in place. And again, I'm leaving, but I will, I don't make suggestions without telling you how to do it, so I'll tell you exactly where you can pull it from in the budget. But essentially, it would be $100,000 to $150,000 allotment a year. And then, as a student applied to Midlands Tech, after they got through any other grants, any scholarships they have, if there was a difference that needed to be made up for their tuition for that semester or for their first two years, is when that fund would be tapped into. And so, that's something I would certainly be supportive of. Hope the rest of you, again, I won't be here, but I hope you would as well. I will tell you where to pull it from in the budget. I'd be glad to do that. But I just think it would be a wonderful program, a way that we could help, you know, with education in the county and making sure that kids who graduate from our school district or anywhere within the county had a guarantee of a two-year associate's degree education. The tuition rate's really not that expensive. I couldn't believe, I asked him what the rate was, said about $2,500 a semester. I know when I was at South Carolina, it was close to triple that, and that was a few years ago. So, I think that would be a wonderful program for the county to look into and hope you'll do that. Just wanted to pass that along to you. And then, in addition, you know, it's been a while, but we had committee meetings and work session meetings about making changes to our animal control ordinances. The way that we left that off in the committee meeting was essentially that work needed to be done based on what the committee at the time had said as a directive. And so, again, I wanted to tell you what I've been working on as I get ready to wrap up my tenure here, but that's one of the things that I've been working on, trying to kind of power through and hopefully be able to get passed before the end of the year. So, based on the committee's recommendations at the time, I've been working with some folks, Outside Resources, Hoof and Paw Society, and some other folks, on making suggested changes to the current animal control ordinance so that we can effect some change there. We're a little behind the curve ball, I think. So, I'll be bringing that back in the form of a first reading for an ordinance rather soon, and we'll certainly communicate that information out to everyone. Then, in addition, we'd just like to put a plug in for everybody who's, you know, running for something. I guess this is our last meeting before the election, so I wish everybody running luck. I know you say, hey, can you wish everybody running luck? But just take it for what it is. But would like to put a plug in for the local Fairfield County NAACP chapter that did a forum this past Thursday, was very well-run, great program, good fair questions, you know, everybody had the same opportunity, and so that was great to see folks stepping up and offering that. And I know that the Chamber, Chamber of Commerce has a forum. One of y'all people who are running, tell me what date is that forum so we can let everybody know?
29th.
29th, and where's that one at?
30th.
Okay. Okay. So, 29th is for council at the Women's Club, and that's, I would imagine, 6:00 PM. And then, the next day is for folks running for the school board. You know where that, where's that one at?
Same place.
Same place, same time?
House.
Okay. And the house. Okay. 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 And the House. Okay. Okay. Well, hope folks will, will go out to that. It's good to, you know, see where the person who's running to represent you stands. And I hope you'll go out to that. Those are always great events. Again, good job, local NAACP chapter, and hope the Chamber event is, is run just as well. I'm sure it will be. But that's all I wanted to share that with everybody. Make sure you go. And thanks to the, the folks who are running also for being willing to do that. Mr. Roof.
Yeah, I also have a meeting with Dr. Rames this coming Tuesday morning to discuss, I assume, the same things he discussed with you, Chairman. And I would, I would support that. That's a great idea for council to help fund that. He'll be giving me the details, I'm sure, Tuesday morning. So I'll, I'll be looking forward to that. And also, I just want to thank Dr. Green, Dr. Rex, and Ms. Green and all the, the foundation, all the hard work y'all have done and coming up with this creative idea. And, and I, I really, I really think it's gonna work. I think it's a great idea and commend you for your, for your creative thinking and look forward to working with you on it. Thank you.
Mr. Robinson.
Yeah, in reference to the forum, Ms. Vickers, I guess she's scraping the bottom of the barrel because she kind of convinced me to be the commentator for it. So I'll be upfront on that. And also, I guess we.
Well, I wish you luck too.
I guess we all was thinking the same thing because I spoke with Dr. Rames and a few of the board members earlier this week. And my only, I definitely love the problem of, of helping out students in this area, but my only problem is accessibility. We don't have accessible, students aren't able to get down to the two campuses in Columbia. So my thing to Dr. Rames was let's try to get more students in Fairfield Campus. Everyone doesn't have the ability to get to a car or have a ride to get to Columbia. So I'm trying to convince them to at least offer basic classes here in Fairfield County. Because I know my son is tired of going down there to the Belt Line campus every Tuesday and Thursday. So let's at least, I definitely like the program, the idea, but if we can get basic classes in Fairfield County, it'd be a plus for a lot of citizens.
Absolutely. Mrs. Goins.
Yes, I'm also aware of the program, support it 100% and have a meeting set up with Dr. Rames also. And want to give a shout out that when you talk, when you said about transportation and bringing that program to Fairfield County, to Midland Tech here. I want to give a shout out to our transit system, Mr. Anderson, and all the transit system. I'm telling you, Fairfield County Transit System is awesome. It is spread out. I mean, they are just some hardworking people and I'm, I'm thankful for them. Also want to give a shout out to our sheriff department. When I left the meeting the other night and got to 2:13, 2:15 and one of the cars went down the road and I said, and I was right behind them. So as I got almost home, they slowed up. I was, I saw the signal come on and they turned the signal off at the first part of the road where I turned, where it's, usually turn. And they went down. So I went down a little further, turned in my end, and they turned in right in front of me. They were checking me out. They were, I said, I like that. They wanted to make sure that. And when I slowed down to turn, I didn't put my signal on right then. I wanted to see what they were gonna do. And they didn't put the signal on, but they slowed down just enough to like, okay, you try anything, I'm gonna back up on you or whatever. But I really appreciate that. And I know from time to times, they're in the community during the day and at night. So I just want to give a shout out and a thank you for them. I want to let, let you know, your, your police department and all, they're looking out for you. You might not see them all the time, but they're watching out for you. Okay.
Always good to review the details, Mrs. Goins.
Yes.
Anyone else? All right. Well, thank you. At this time, we'll move on to executive session. We have three matters for tonight. A is a legal matter. This is an update on litigation against SCANA, S C E and G, in reference to the abandoned VC summer new nuclear project. Item B is a proposed contractual matter, discussion regarding a lease for the rehab center with Palmetto Health USC. And then item C is a proposed contractual matter, discussion regarding a potential contractual arrangement in association with the request for special source revenue credit from the Fairfield County School District Education Foundation on behalf of Gorlick Brothers Capital. We have a motion.
Still moving, Mr. Chair.
Motion has been made and properly seconded to go into executive session for the purposes as stated. Any discussion? Seeing none, those in favor. Those opposed. Council's now in executive session. Thank you.